Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Westford School Committee. Today is Tuesday, October fifteenth, Tuesday, October fifteenth. I'm just gonna say that again, so it sinks in. A reminder that this meeting is being recorded. We will start with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got a long consent agenda tonight. I'm not gonna read it all. It's in the, it's in the agenda for you to see payroll and expense warrants from two weeks ago, payroll, couple of manual payrolls, and then this week's payroll and expense warrants for signatures tonight. We're very happy to see the food service employment contract. That was bargained all last spring. Did a lot of work from both sides, everybody, that resulted in a great agreement, so we're happy to see that. And then, as you'll remember from our school committee goals, to get more up to date on executive session minutes, there is an acknowledgement of review and release, subject to redactions of school committee executive session minutes from FY twenty, and also new student clubs and activities for this school year. And as part of the recently bargained update to our stipends, we are happy that now a pilot year is paid. In the previous agreement, a staff member could start a pilot, but it wouldn't work itself into the tiers for a stipend until the second year. So we, one of that, that was one of the biggest things in our bargaining, was that somebody's time is somebody's time, whether it's their first, the first club or not, the first year of a club or not. So we're happy that that's in there. And there were three, three new clubs for WA in there. So, and if you, a lot of them have very active Instagram pages, and it's been really fun to kind of see all that activity start to spur up. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda?
All in favor?
Thank you.
Six to six.
Yeah. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. We're logged into Zoom yet?
Yeah.
Okay. A reminder that public comment for any item or topic on or off the agenda is always available near the top of the agenda for individuals to share their thoughts. Speakers will be limited to two minutes per person. Please use public comment for, even if you refer to something later on the agenda. Virtual public comment is available through Zoom. You can just raise your hand and you'll be promoted and unmuted, or in person at the microphone in Millennium Building. So we'll just give that a minute, as there's no one in the room. Okay, looks like none, so we'll move on to informational updates and start with the superintendent.
Thank you. I am happy to share with all of you that Kristin Gillette, who is a German teacher at the Blanchard Middle School, was selected by the American Association of Teachers of German as the Outstanding German Educator for this year.
Wow.
Right? Yeah, it's huge. Her contributions to the Westford Word Language Department during the past seventeen years include having taught all levels from sixth grade through AP, advising the German Exchange Program, and stepping in to help co-advice the Spanish Exchange Program. In addition to her teaching responsibilities, they shared with me that Kristin volunteers her time and expertise as a board member for the Massachusetts Foreign Language Association. Yeah, that's what I just said. I'm like, it was then spelling it out. I'm like, oh no, that's, that's what it is. So we, I want to congratulate Kristin. I know her department was thrilled for her, and, and, you know, people have been congratulating her, but I wanted that to come to your attention, because that's a really nice accolade.
Can you, can you just reiterate the, like, the official title?
Yes, it's Outstanding German Educator K to eight for this year, and from the Association of Teachers of German, of the American Association of Teachers of German.
American Association Teachers of German.
AATG.
Thank you.
Right. So congratulations to Ms. Gillette. We did, we've, we've set the date for the root cause analysis event that I had mentioned about the, with the equity audit. It's gonna be December sixth. It will be from nine to three. It's a Friday. You will all get an invitation, whether or not you can all attend or not. And if you are all in attendance, we will need to keep you separate, so that you're not deliberating, and it's not a, an open meeting.
Right.
We'll be sending out invitations to our, our colleagues and partners with the town DEI team, with the town committee, as well as members of our team, and then, so that information will be getting out. If we have available slots beyond that, based on people who are able to RSVP, then we'll open it up as well. But we're really trying to invite, we're gonna invite CPAC leadership, LPAK leadership, different stakeholder groups to be a part of this. And it'll be a full day event. The air folks said that they'll provide lunch, so it'll be here in this building.
Will it be like an RSVP?
Yes, we have, yeah, we're gonna send that to everybody who were, all the different stakeholder groups first, so that we can determine, we want to have between thirty-five to forty people there.
Wow.
So depending on the numbers of people who are able to attend, then we might open it up to first, like, for example, the first group that will, there was a steering committee from our DEI team within the schools. That'll be the first group, and if they can't all make it, then we'll extend it to other members of the team as well, too. So that's kind of what we're, we're looking at there, as students as well, too.
And you need people there for the full day?
We do. If somebody can't commit to the full day, but they can do, like, the morning half, or the afternoon half, that would be great. I say, it needs to be a significant amount of time to, to be able to look at the data, and to be able to contribute to the conversation. If it's too short of a time, then I think we'd lose time explaining to somebody what was going on.
Sure.
But, yeah, so that's December sixth. And October is National Principals Month, so I was just kind of reminding all of you that, as we, you know, find ways, one of the things, I mean, they've done an incredible job trying to get the school year started, and we do, we do celebrate all of our educators in the spring as well, too, but it's just a nice thing that, that we find opportunities to thank our principals during the month of October.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent, okay, school committee updates. I'll just start with Tom and go over.
Just real quick, just follow up on the March Band Competition. It went off really well, no hiccups that I know of, and we hosted, I believe, north of twenty-five hundred people, students and spectators. So it was a great event.
Awesome. Thank you.
Start times, subcommittee update. We met last week with Jen Piper, Transportation Director, and Renee D of D Bus. You know, we're, we're further evaluating our routes and our ridership, but we're looking at one to two estimated scenarios right now through that software that we're using, TransFinder, and we're foreseeing a later start time for our high schools and middle schools could be achieved in those scenarios. We'd obviously want to push for keeping a current number of buses and ridership, but, you know, to do that, we would, we would have to look at consolidating to one tier of service for our grades three to five and K to two students. And so that would alter some start and end times, and we'd have to consider those adjustments. Plan to meet with Jeff Bunyan, Athletics Director, next week. We want to look at those later start and end times, those proposed scenarios, and think around things like the sports, scheduling, transportation, facilities, other conflicts that might be happening. We're, want to get a timeline cemented for getting surveys and community feedback out, and really look towards getting a final recommendation for December, some point in early December, so.
Thanks. And Bill's too humble to add, but he was a speaker at...
I was gonna, you took the words out, but I can, I can tell now. That's fine. So yes, I was one of the few speakers at yesterday's inaugural observance of Indigenous Peoples' Day at First Parish. We got moved indoors due to the New England weather, of course, so I was there with State Representative Jim Arcero, Select Boardwoman Andrea Perrin Arsweet. We had Joe Diamond, Anjali Rajput, Wendy Glory, and others of the DEI Committee. We got to listen to Angela Marcelino, who's from the Mashpee Tribe down in the Cape Cod area. She was able to recognize her tribe's history and influence on our region, and the country, and the world, too. The influence of her family and friends in her life, their, her rich cooking traditions that she learned from her mom. And I think we all came away having learned something new. And I think that's, that's the point of these events in town, the instructional opportunities we have as a district to incorporate new curricula and use our educators, and really just looking for opportunities to reflect, to learn, to build perspective, to have open dialogue, and to build empathy. So I think it was a great day. Very honored to be there, so.
Thanks, Bill. Sean, eh?
Oh, I'm up. Okay, Thursday, October seventeenth, seven PM, CPAC. For those who don't know what that is, it is the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, and it is, where are we meeting?
Millennium.
Here, this room, Millennium Conference Room B, which is this room. There's a virtual option that is available, cpacwestford@gmail.com. Yeah, should be great meeting, meets once a month.
It's the first of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, they haven't, they didn't meet September, so it's the first of the year, yeah.
Yeah. So, chance to have your voices heard. You don't have to have a special education student in the district to join, but certainly if you do, it's a great group of parents to bounce ideas off of, and, you know, relay concerns if you have any, so.
Thanks, Sean. Anything more?
Update from the CAT meeting in September. They are looking for a larger space after 2027, when their lease runs out, and they just hired a consultant for a strategic plan.
Cool. Thank you.
We're on, policy's on the agenda, so I'll hold off on that.
Okay. Yeah, finances on the agenda. Finance subcommittee met, but you'll see that document later. And I just wanted to add that Capital Planning Committee met. Did you want to speak to the Stony Brook generator?
Sure. So, one of the things that, that we've discovered, we need to replace the Stony Brook generator. It's actually been, it's been having problems for quite a while. And Jeff Goodwin was able to get a new generator hopefully in place in a couple of months, as opposed to renting one for even a longer period of time, if we were to wait longer through the capital process. So we brought that to the Capital Planning Committee, and we are using one-time funds from our school choice revenue to support that. We'll be able to do that through the general fund and then reimburse it with, with school choice funds. So it's $185,000 in order to replace that. And so he's, he's anticipating that he'll be able to do it sooner than later now with those funds. So I think that was a, a very good use of, of that, in order to, in order to help support that cause and not then have to wait for another cycle through capital. Another thing that we talked about during the meeting was the school computer renewal, renewal cycle. And Mike Wells, or Director of Technology, I think, and Carolyn Martin, they presented what our, what our typical need is, which I think was, was, was typical. That in itself wasn't surprising. One of the things I just kind of wanted to highlight was the fact that because of some changes with subscriptions and where our models are with the Chromebooks, our elementary teachers and staff and the technicians have been doing more juggling this year than they typically would, because iReady, which is something that our teachers are using very well, and it's providing us with wonderful data, decided to no longer support the level of Chromebooks that we have at that age. So with the renewal cycle that we have in place, we know that it's only a one-year problem, and that as we renew Chromebooks for next year, and as we cycle them throughout the schools, then they will be supported. But that has been a headache for our teachers. I want you to imagine our youngest learners in kindergarten and first grade having to log into a new device every time they want to use something, and it's challenging to even know with their whole, usually with the elementary schools, people might not be aware of this, but we use Clever, which allows the student to easily log in to an application relatively quickly. And so they're not able to do that with the iReady devices, or with the Chromebooks to support iReady. They're having to go back to when carts were shared, and so there's really only a couple of carts of Chromebooks that are supporting this. So it's just become, it's, it's become a juggling act that we haven't seen since before COVID.
Because to point out, the iReady isn't just a kind of a teaching tool, it's an assessment tool as well.
That's right, right.
And all the kids get, get assessed. I think it's three times a year.
Yes, and it's really, it's really valuable, and it's really been helping us. So it was one of the things that we just needed to figure out how to make that work, and people have been. They've been stepping up, and it's just added a little bit of time to everything that they have to do. But we've had that same issue for a number of years with MCAS. MCAS decided only certain systems on the Chromebooks were going to be supported. So the elementary schools have been juggling which grade is using which Chromebooks when it came to MCAS testing, and we've had to do that for a couple of years until then the Chromebooks cycle through, and then every, and then they're well-supported. But I thought, that was just an interesting conversation that we had, that I thought was important for the Capital Planning Committee to understand that side of it. And honestly, Mike and Carolyn were relatively humble in the way that they were presenting their request, and I wanted everybody to be aware of their, the, the work that their team has been doing, and that all the teachers have had to do, and all the ESPs, and everybody helping, making sure that the students are able to access them.
I think that's really helpful, because we, it's, it sometimes feels like this yearly cycle to just purchase a new set of Chromebooks, and people maybe not, maybe don't appreciate the background.
Right.
How that flows down to the elementary schools, and if they are six years out of date, or seven years out of date, that seems like no big deal until the software doesn't support that, so.
Right, right.
Thanks for adding that.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, it's a ten-year, either eight or ten-year that they're expecting now.
Cycle is now, yeah. And that's something that they've talked about. They used to, they had, they had a shorter lifespan when we first started this, and so they're, they're, they're happy that now the newer Chromebooks have a longer lifespan, so that's working. But we purchased them for sixth grade, and we purchased them for ninth grade. And then as they go with the middle school and the, and the academy students, then they get cycled to the elementary schools. So that's the way that that works.
So are we buying, we're not buying new Chromebooks this year, is it, did you say?
No, we do. Every year, every year, there's a certain number that we're purchasing.
This has just added, like, context to it.
This was, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was just sharing the...
Doing something else. And actually, to follow on, at our next meeting on the twenty-eighth, Jeff Goodwin will come with the facilities requests that are related to capital, anyway. That Mike Wells presents, because he's town and schools, he presents his technology request to capital on the technology scheduled day, but schools' requests will go, I think it's, whatever that Friday is.
November first.
November first. So this, our next meeting, Jeff will come and present his requests that he's gonna bring to capital. The one update I was gonna share was that we have a tentative meeting scheduled for the next tri-board meeting. That'll be Thursday, November seventh, at seven PM. And we'll move on to student updates.
Okay. So for this week, we have, I know this is for a lot of senior parents, Financial Aid Night for colleges. It's a big one. Definitely a doozy for a lot of mom and dads out there. We have the class of 2025 Movie Night this Friday, which is exciting. We also have the Fall Semi Formal on Saturday for juniors and seniors, also exciting. Next Saturday are the PSATs, so for juniors and really eager sophomores, it's good to sign up and, you know, get an early start. Back to School Night last week went great. I heard both from students, from their parents, and then from staff, that it was a great turnout. Lots of people showed up, and it was great to meet parents. This Thursday is the NHS induction ceremony for 2024 Fall 2024 Inductees. It's very exciting. As an NHS member myself, it's, it's very cool to set up and to see everybody be inducted. And also today, if anybody of you are interested, it's the Happy First College Application Deadline. It's not a popular one, but there are definitely ones. I know, like, UNC was today, so, you know, hope they got those applications in. Grades close in two weeks, so that's exciting. You know, if you see any WA students with their heads in a book, it's because we are slammed with assessments and projects, and we are doing our work. And then also, next Saturday, the twenty-sixth, is also the WA Hall of Fame induction ceremony at five, so that's exciting, too. And that's it.
There's a lot going on. And there was the first unified basketball game, I think last week.
Yes.
And Jeff Bunyan, our Athletic Director, was great. He sent us all a video of, like, the tip-off and then a little bit of halftime celebration, so.
I don't believe they won, but I heard it was a good turnout, and I heard from some of my friends that they had a good time.
And there is one more home date. I don't have the schedule in front of me, but I think it's two...
Schedule is in the hallway, because our roots, some of our roots students are participating, and so we've put the schedule in the hall.
Great. Check it on your way out, the door tonight. Okay.
And just a reminder that it's special town meeting next week.
Oh, my gosh, thank you.
I have a post-it right here.
I figured you would have.
Special Town Meeting, the sign-up for childcare, I know it's at night, so that might be a little light on childcare registration, but in case you need it, sign-up for childcare ends tomorrow, but Special Town Meeting is next Monday, the twenty-first. Four rooms will be set up with our moderator and three assistant moderators. I believe I heard we have clickers for twenty-seven hundred attendees. Doors will open around, like, five-thirty. There's parking at Abbott, Robinson, and Christopher Lee, so if Abbott is closer to you, save the time, park there, wait for the continuous shuttle. And the COA is providing the van pickups for transportation. Am I misreading? Or Commissioner, did this...
If you do need accommodations to attend, you can just email accessibility@westfordma.gov for any accommodations with regards to accessibility, captions, et cetera.
Did I say, was that Westford Academy? I think I left that out.
It is, yeah.
I think I left that part out, but you get it. Okay, great. Thank you so much for all those updates. We are gonna move on to our First Order of Business, which is the school safety update, and we'll invite Police Chief Mark Chambers to the table, and Dr. Chu.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Chief.
Thank you.
So, when we were creating the agenda for this, this week, we talked about the fact that it would be, I think, helpful to have a discussion with all of you about the communication that took place when the, when there was a cyclist that came on the school property on a Thursday, two weeks ago, just over, just over a week ago, but back at the, at the beginning of the month. And so I had reached out to the chief and asked if he'd, if he'd joined me here, so that we could kind of talk through the communication, talk through what we knew, when we knew it. Specifically, I think, one of the things from the feedback that I've received and heard from some of you and from some parents was, you know, just the concern initially with the miscommunication that I sent out Friday afternoon. So that first thing that came from the district, it was around three o'clock on that Friday. I had sent something out based on the information that I had at that time. And the, the, the big misstep, if you will, would be that I didn't call the chief before sending it out, because within ten minutes after that, the police department was posting a picture of an individual looking for more information. And so Valerie actually contacted me right away and said that this, this was posted, and so I called the chief right away, and we had a, a quick conversation, first of all, saying, okay, well, what is it that's going on, and, and the information that was different. And so it was about an hour later, I was able to then send out a corrected piece of information that just corrected the idea that what I had said was that they had identified the individual and spoken with the individual, and that is what wasn't the case. So then I corrected that information, and then we, we talked about sending out information at Sunday night. So then Sunday evening, I then sent out, the chief and I were able to talk over the weekend, and we drafted something together that then we sent to everybody on Sunday evening. But some of the questions that, that I think we were getting was why there wasn't communication from the district Thursday evening, any differences that took place Thursday in the responses. And so what I thought would be helpful would be to share with all of you the information that was known at that time. So approximately around noon on Thursday, there were reports of this individual riding an e-bike through a few of our school properties. When we learned about it and learned that the person had gone to multiple school properties, we called the schools. We sort of divided and conquered, and Kathy Mucci and Courtney Moran and I, we all called the schools to let them know that, that they should be keeping their eyes open, because we've just received word that this was an unexpected event, okay, that this individual was riding on the properties, and we weren't necessarily sure why. The Westford Police had already been notified, our principals that had seen, the, the bike rider had reached out to PD, and our, this, a school resource officer, a resource officer was involved right away. So we were just letting people know, if you see something, we told the principals to call the police department. Now, some of the schools made different choices there. Our, two, two of our youngest schools, Miller and Navnassett, Robinson, the, the individual had already ridden by the bike at Robinson, and, and the person had already left. And so Robinson didn't make the same decision to hold recess inside the way that Navnassett and Miller did, when they were given that information. Now, before school was even over, my office had spoke with a school resource officer, and we were informed that there was no threat of suspicious activity. And it was our understanding that a person had been identified. Now, this is something we'll talk about in a minute, right, because the chief will say that the, they had, they had, they had a person of interest. Well, we interpreted that as the person has been identified as a Westford resident. So that was the information that I was going on when I sent out the communication on, on Friday afternoon. The other important thing, from my perspective, was, again, before school was out, there was no threat of suspicious activity, is what we were being told from the police department. And so that was why there wasn't a district-wide communication. Most of the schools weren't impacted, and it didn't change anything that they were doing during the day. The two schools that did make adjustments, they let their parents know in a way that they do. I think our K to two schools tend to send more communications out to the parents. One of the things that I had explained to a parent who had asked me specifically the difference in, in terminology, the Miller School talked about doing a shelter in place, which is actually a protocol that all of our schools use. It's not a lockdown, it's a shelter in place. We, we just have students stop moving, they stay where they are, business can continue taking place, lessons and teaching continues to take place. We're usually just trying to reduce traffic in the hallways. It's typically for a medical emergency. That is typically what's happening when we do a shelter in place. And honestly, the Miller School has more of them, based on their population. And so it didn't seem out of character, or didn't seem out of, it didn't seem like an, an untypical thing for the principal to share that they did a shelter in place, and so your child might be asking questions about this, and then she, and she shared that information. Our Navnassett principal decided to keep the students in from recess, and communicated that to families as well, too. Our, our principals were all meeting Friday morning. We were having our regular, regularly scheduled principals meeting, and we talked at length about the communication. We talked about the different responses. We talked about, at that moment in time, we were, some of the principals were actually, were also under the impression that a person has, had been spoken to, and, and when the school resource officer was able to join our meeting and give us some updated information from his perspective at that moment in time, too. And that's kind of where we were at, which is why we didn't send something out from a district on Thursday night. And so then I had questions on Friday from different parents as to why some communication went out from some schools and didn't go out from other schools. So that's when I was like, well, we should send something out from the district, because it was also clear that there were rumors that were growing as to who this person may or may not be, and if this person had any connection to Westford Public Schools. And so that's when I was trying to just try to correct any misinformation, or just to provide the information that we had at that time. But that's, for the most part, the timeline of the events that led to the communication. I don't know if there's anything, I just said a lot, Chief, so.
You said a lot.
Is it worth just clarifying exactly what schools, I mean, I know we've, we've
Sure.
figured it out, but I know there was a lot of kind of
Yeah.
maybe rumors or misunderstandings as well of what actual schools.
Yeah, and we included that in the Sunday night communication, too.
So the individual did drive through the Westford Academy, the Robinson, the Christopher Lee, and then the Abbott School. To be honest, I personally viewed all of the video of the individual going through the, all of the parking lots. Never once did he stop. He'd never approached anyone, never stopped to take notes, look at security, approach any of the doors. He legitimately just rode through the parking lots. Where most people may not know Westford as well as the police do, there's a lot of trails that run between all of our schools and behind all of our schools. So seeing the way that he was dressed, and the fact that he did not, you know, I understand the concerns of the community, and that's one of the reasons... I understand the concerns of the community and that's one of the reasons why we put out the attempt to identify on Friday because we did hear from the school, we did hear from the parents and we wanted to let everybody know we're aware of it and we are investigating it. But our level of concern at the police department wasn't what it was within the school system purely because there wasn't, other than his dress, there wasn't suspicious activity to us. And for all those factors, there was, you know, everybody that viewed the video, nobody believed that it was surveilling. You know, like there was any note-taking or, you know, any indicators that there was anything more going on than him riding. We also understand that these schools are open campuses. There are members of the public coming and going between all of these schools throughout all hours of the day. We did identify a cyclist that was seen in the Robinson parking lot around the same time that we had actually spoken to earlier that morning, riding through the Westford Academy and the Robinson School at about 6:30. So we did have a person of interest. That is who we had, we had said that we had identified a person of interest. And I think that may have been where some of the terminology that we use as police to, where we think we're clarifying, sometimes it may not be. And we might be able to do a better job with that, really explaining exactly where we're at with an investigation. You know, just, we could just simplify it. We're going to speak with someone. We don't think it's them, but we just need to make sure that we, you know, do diligence and investigate. So Thursday night, we did not have a lot of concern about the individual. We were not aware of the communications that were sent out by the school on Thursday evening, the two elementary schools. And the first we heard was Friday, late morning of any communication that had gone out. So when we were actually crafting our Facebook post at about the same time probably that Dr. Chu was getting ready to put his out. And, you know, if we had a chance to speak before that, I think we probably could have saved a lot of people some confusion and anxiety. But I wasn't aware that it was being put out, but once it was, we had a conversation very quickly to clarify because we knew it was going to happen and, you know, and I apologize for our part in it if we had any. It's, it's one of those things where when you start to see the momentum, the Facebook posts, the social media, although not reality, it does drive a lot of behaviors in this community and any community. We really did want to address it as soon as possible. That's why we did put out the attempt to identify. But I think over the weekend, Dr. Chu and I spoke several times, actually. You know, I was on the Jimmy Fund Walk in Boston and spoke to him as well. So we were bouncing back and forth on Saturday and Sunday. And we made sure that we were able to put something out that we both felt was informative and let everybody know exactly where we were at on Sunday night. Unfortunately, on Monday evening, we were able to get a positive identification. We did speak with the individual. Again, this is very difficult because there was no crime committed and that individual had no obligation to even speak with us or even clarify what he was doing on the school property. He did. He was very cooperative. He apologized. He had no idea of the fear that he caused. He promised that he will not do it again. He has not been seen on there again. You know, what I find more concerning is that there are some social media sleuths that took it upon themselves to try to identify the individual as well. And that information has been passed around through social media, which I would caution anybody that's doing that. Please be very careful about that type of information. You can unwittingly cause some additional stress for that individual. He was very apologetic and again, we were 100% able to clear that suspicious person. There was never any intent to harm anybody in the school or gather information, so. That's about all I have.
I was, I mean, granted, I understand how the two messages at that moment in time were in complete conflict, right? And I understand if that's just what somebody sees, the reaction they're going to think is, oh, my gosh, the schools and the police department just obviously aren't talking to each other. And the strange thing is, I mean, like, in the whole time that we've had a working, we talk all the time. And our SRO, Detective Bernadine, is talking with us all the time. And so the idea that people would think that there was this great disconnect between the two organizations in the town, I was like, well, that, it couldn't be further from the truth. It stemmed from me not picking up the phone and/or the chief not picking up the phone. But we talk regularly and this was at that moment in time, something that I didn't think, oh, this is all ready, I'm ready to send this out. I did think I had all the information and I just didn't really want to bother him at the time, you know, which is, you know, hindsight. I clearly should have. But I do think for people who are concerned that thinking we're not on the same page, I think we are. I think our, I think we are exhibiting that our priority is on the safety of our students and staff. And I think we exhibit that regularly. I understand the confusion that this created. And, you know, we were talking about it Friday morning, just even about the day before. And then we continued to talk about it as a leadership team. One of the things that I think is interesting is, in terms of people have asked the questions, okay, well, with the communications that did come from schools or didn't come from schools, well, how do we make that decision, you know? And typically, like I said, the principals will communicate if something out of the ordinary happens that they feel has impacted the student's day, that they think it's important for the parents to know. And that changes at the age level, right? There's different things that'll take place. I think another good example is if, you know, there'll be times when ambulances will be called to the schools and the principals aren't sharing that information necessarily out with their families. But one of the things we want to make sure we have is a clear flow chart, right? That'll say, okay, if this happens, then does this trigger a certain type of communication? Because I think that was also a question that people have, again, back to why the district didn't send something out Thursday night and two schools did. So I think it's a good question that we're looking at and we're going to, we're going to develop that.
Thank you very much. Any questions follow-up from the committee?
No, I appreciate kind of getting that clarity. I think, like you said, Mark, was just, you know, the social media and kind of in that kind of vacuum where different people have different information. I think one of the kind of interesting pieces of information I heard as we spent the week kind of figuring things out was, you know, clearly you had been able to view video footage and stuff and determined by that behavior. And I think people didn't necessarily have that. So when they only had the photograph that was on social media and not necessarily understanding kind of what exactly had transpired, you know, you can understand, especially in this day and age and with, on top of it all, the election year that's in it, you know, how parents can be concerned and kind of anxious over their kids. So I think sometimes maybe sharing as much of that information, because to me it was really reassuring to know that the experts had eyes on it and had determined that behavior-wise, there was nothing.
Unfortunately, in the middle of an investigation like that, we're not going to share.
Yeah, yeah.
So we share what we can and we try to be as transparent as possible. But if there's, particularly when the person remains unidentified, you know, just because this is our impression and this is what we think and this is how, you know, through our combined experience, this is how we feel about an incident, there is still a chance that we are wrong. So, and that's one of the reasons why we continue to investigate the way we did. It's just, we put out the information that we can.
That you can.
Unfortunately, I know people want more. When we can share things, I think, I think that's one thing that we have actually started to do very well, is share within the community with, you know, what we're doing as a police department, not just investigations, but the other activities that we do in the community, so. And our SROs were immediately on top of this. They worked with Dean Toomey, they worked with the principal over at the Robinson School, the principal at the Christopher Lee School. The SRO for the day was Nick Mariano. He reached out to Dr. Chu's office to advise him of what was going on as well. So I think our communication level is there and it was just, it was the one piece that we missed. You know, which is unfortunate. It caused a lot more anxiety than it really needed to. But I think on a day-to-day basis, I think that we communicate extremely well. Particularly at the high school level as well because that's where our SRO is. And we have, we have great working relationships. And I think even SRO Bernadine was at the leadership meeting on Friday afternoon to help answer some questions. So moving forward, you know, what we can release, we will.
Do you think there's any kind of value? I know we had the school safety task force a couple of years ago and I know they looked, Valerie and I had spoken about, you know, all the components that they had looked at regarding those topics. But one of the things that we were kind of saying didn't seem to be kind of put in black and white was kind of a communication piece of, in the incident of X or Y, that these could be the communication procedures. Because I think the big thing in this situation was, there was no, you know, all the safety protocols were followed appropriately. So this was purely a kind of communication kind of thing. So do you think there's any value or, you know, consideration? Either A, to kind of put a bit more procedure or protocols in place for how the two departments, because you're, you know, big departments, communicate in these specific incidents. And I know, Dr. Chu, you also mentioned about with the principals and kind of, you know, putting again, those kind of having a conversation of, is there particular protocols that we should look at for X, Y and Z incidents? Just that, you know, Dr. Chu, if you weren't here tomorrow and we had a new superintendent, you know, that they would know, oh, this is the established procedure. So I don't know if you've kind of given any thought to that.
Well, like I said, we've talked about like the flow chart aspect and I think one of the things that the chief and I talked about and it came up multiple times as we talked over the weekend was, certainly if either one of us has anything where the other person's department is involved, we're going to be talking to each other, you know? And I think like that is just kind of a good ground rule for that. The good news is that we don't have a lot of things that go out to the community that involve both of us, fortunately, you know? But I think, and I think it does speak to that because there is, there is the natural difference between, well, first of all, we're all protecting privacy, right, from different angles. But you're right, there's a different layer of communication that I think we might provide to families that I think the police department wouldn't be able to provide to the general public necessarily in something. So we'll, we'll need to make sure that we're coordinating in that regard.
Because the other thing on that communication piece is, you know, not all our families are on Facebook, believe it or not. We discovered this, you know, in particular. So I think those direct emails from the district have a lot of weight in terms of some information. Sometimes they're not always on social media, kind of getting those updates.
I would also say that, you know, for a joint statement, from the chief Chambers and from me, Dr. Chu, you know, Sunday night, we get that email to all the parents, but maybe that's also posted. You know, Western Police Department, there's some communication that goes out as well. Just to, just to see that joint work that's happening together, to know that people are in concert as much as you can be. You know, and that's hard, right? When you're, when you're in that moment-to-moment, hour-to-hour window, both online and in your investigations and the work that you do as a district and department. So just food for thought. I mean, as someone who's also worn the shoes and been there in the line with my local police department in Wakefield, you know, it's, it's good work, so.
I think one of the things that I've kind of read in some of the messages we got was why it was such a different response at each school. And I think it speaks to the geographic difference, right? It makes sense that there's a kind of similar response at WA and the two schools that are, right, immediate proximity. But then Miller is obviously going to have a different response unless the police says this is a wide. I don't even think that that would be something you would decide, Dr. Chu, to say this has to be a response town-wide unless, you know, you heard from the police that, you know, we need to make this.
Certainly.
I think it's a building-level decision and that makes sense. So I would hope, and it sounds like the principals were in communication with each other to let each other know what they were experiencing so they could make their own decision. And I think you do a good job of empowering the principals to do that because they do have to know their surroundings. And, you know, yeah, I would hope that they're also letting you know that they're experiencing something, right? And that you can then make a response from that as well. But to say that something needs to come out from every school, I think, would put undue stress on parents that weren't impacted necessarily, so. So I think that's just something to keep in mind. And like you said, the fact that this town has a lot of trails. And I think we value that as a town. Some of those trails do go in the vicinity of schools. So I think we will have similar things at some point that, you know, someone is stopping, taking pictures of birds or whatever and, you know, not thinking about the fact that the school's right there. But, so I don't know if there's any public education that we can put out that would just remind people to maybe, maybe it is a good thing to check in, just say, hey, I'm going to be on this trail. And there's nothing that requires them to do it. Like I said, it's an open campus, so we can't require it.
I don't know that they'd get through the door at the school to tell them what they were doing.
That's the other piece is that, you know, my experience at the schools is the doors are locked, so that's.
One piece I just want to underscore and I don't know if anybody else has plans to weigh in, but Catherine mentioned the TSSTF, the Town and School Safety Task Force. And in case, I know, like especially K-2 families maybe sort of new to following district or town-level activities. But the Town and School Safety Task Force operated for many years under strong leadership and worked together with all the, many departments for years. A large focus of that, though, was really the.
There was a full audit. There was a full, that involved a full security, school safety, security audit.
And the infrastructure of buildings. So a lot of that came out of like keypads and door, I don't know.
Well, that's, I mean, that's why we have all the key cards now. All the buildings are locked. We enhanced the camera systems throughout the district.
I think the phones, wasn't there like a phone?
Yeah, there were aspects, there was infrastructure aspects to it, but then there was also just different practices and protocols that were, that were reviewed and adjusted.
Did the wellness coordinator come out of that as well, I think?
That was a different.
It was a spin-off.
It was a spin-off of us, yes.
It went to the health and, health and safety.
We did have a parent email and ask if there had been an audit. So I just want to, like, I feel like if you, if your oldest is in kindergarten, this is all maybe new to you, right? So I just wanted to set that stage.
Yeah. First of all, I appreciate the comments of the timeline. I know I expressed that I really hope that we would have a timeline of actually what was, because it seems like that, that seems to be the biggest concern that we got from parents was, you know, who knew what when and, you know, why wasn't it conveyed? My, my take on, and I think Dr. Chu already did articulate that going forward, that there will be some kind of flow chart or something. But I would just err on the side of, if there's a question as to whether or not a district-wide email should be sent, that we should be erring on the side of sending it, right? My reasoning for that is twofold. First, are schools' kind of responsibility to the families a little different than the police department's, right? I mean, they're investigating something, evidence preservation and the like. We don't really have those concerns and I understand we can look out for our fellow town group, but at the end of the day, it sounds like the community really wanted something earlier in this case. And I get it, this was one of those questionable calls where it wasn't abundantly clear what was going on and it certainly, there were no red flags that had raised concern to the police or even to the school district. But at the same token, there was enough that there was, I guess, a shelter in place at one school, which, again, I understand is not abnormal for that one. So I would err on the side that if we're going to send a district-wide email, that we should err on the side of doing it. And then regarding this flow chart, which I appreciate because that was one of my questions going into today, which is what proactive measures. which is what proactive measures are we taking to make sure that, you know, something like this doesn't happen again? I would hope, Chris, that maybe you could let the, once something like that's developed, is bring it back to the school committee, even if not in a public session, right? If there's a concern of something like that being public, I would just love to hear it. And hopefully the, the police can kind of sign off on it too as to, because I know something like that must exist, right? I mean, when a, when a, when a principal sees something, right, there's, there's got to be a directive as to what they're supposed to do, or are they just supposed to call 911, right? So I would hope that's articulated and that our building leadership knows exactly kind of where that, who's supposed to be brought into the fold.
We, we have, we have a lot of specific protocols for things that I think are even on the more obvious side. And one of the things that we've been doing is that we've actually been practicing different table talk exercises to talk about the things that aren't the obvious things, right? The unexpected thing. This is very unexpected. I, I will say, I appreciate everything that you just said, and I, I agree with you. On Thursday, there was no question about sending out a district-wide communication. And I think that's kind of important for people to understand. At 1:34, we were told there's no suspicious threat. We called principals to say, hey, some of your other principals said this, there's just this strange thing. Just pay attention to this. The NavNassett school was told, the person might be riding in that direction. The Miller school was not told that. The middle schools weren't told that. So I know this probably might still upset people to know that we didn't think that there was a threat on Thursday before the end of the school day. And the police were involved immediately. I sent out a district-wide communication on Friday because there was confusion on Thursday. And so that, I think, is a bigger piece of it. Like, I hear what you're saying, so I just don't want to give anybody the impression that we were sitting there thinking that we should have sent something on Thursday. That, that wasn't part of, that, that's, the situation that presented itself on Thursday was strange, out of the ordinary. But it wasn't, it, it wasn't something where we thought that people were in danger specifically. That wasn't the case.
Got it. But if, if students are held in when recess is normally outside, is that not? I guess that's my question, is that not something that merits a district-wide email? And I guess your response is no, and I would kindly disagree.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I suppose the kind of coming on that is, is to try and figure out, on Thursday, did we kind of feel on the school side that it was kind of case closed?
Very much so.
But in the police department, I don't know, did, was it still very much an open? Like, had you considered a case closed or was it kind of still being investigated? And I think that's maybe really what it boils down to is two departments understanding if this is done and dusted or if there was merit to continue to investigate it. And that maybe giving that clarity to each other is kind of, regardless of what the situation is, maybe brings more focus into how to communicate it, I don't know.
So first, we, we do have a memorandum of understanding and a standard operating procedures for the SRO, when the school's going to contact him, what information can be shared. So those, those methods are in place when it comes to criminal activity or things that the SRO should be involved in, or the things that the SRO should not be involved in as well, which is probably just, just as important in the school setting. As far as whether it was done and dusted, which I'm stealing that. We investigate everything fully. Would it necessarily have gotten the attention that it deserved without the feedback that we were receiving from the community? Probably not. You know, we posted, we posted the image and we ran down leads. I don't necessarily know that we would have done that any differently if the pressure wasn't there. You know, we probably would have kicked around for a few more days to see if we could get any other video surveillance or, you know, just have a patrol officer pick the guy up while he's riding around and have a conversation with him. But, yeah, once it became a concern of the community, that's, we allocate resources depending on the needs of the community. So, once we, once we did see that, we, we said, hey, let's, let's kick this up. Let's put it out now, you know, and see if we can get some information, so. But no, Thursday, not that it was done and dusted, but it certainly wasn't a priority.
I just have one follow-up question there because I think the part, so, and for what it's worth, Dr. Chu and the chair of the school committee collaborate a lot on communications or impending communications or whether or not to send a communication. So when we chatted on Friday afternoon before the first email, I relayed the same information that Dr. Chu had, which, again, illustrated a resolved issue. What, what then reading, for me, reading the Sunday night email with, which had a lot more detail that you guys had collaborated on, one thing that struck me was that there was increased monitoring on Friday morning of the schools?
Not Friday morning, no. On Monday. Monday, we added extra patrols because we knew what the concern of the community was. And we were trying to do our best to make sure everybody felt safe bringing their kids to school.
Yeah.
I mean, we received emails of, of a, a parent that had a 10th grade student that was afraid to go to school because of all the social media buzz. You know, that, that's going to elicit a response from us. We want the community to feel safe.
Yeah. I think a collective appreciation for that response on Monday morning.
And, and that was just the question I was going to ask was, did you have many parents actually reaching out directly to you, like on the Friday? Or was it, what was it that spurred on that kind of move with the push on the?
Conversation with Dr. Chu?
After the?
Over the course of the weekend, well, in Friday afternoon.
Friday, yeah.
But when we weren't able to identify the individual over the course of the weekend and we continued to hear the concerns of the residents, it's, it really wasn't a discussion. It was, you know?
So you had a number of parents reaching out directly to you?
Yeah, and we heard a lot of feedback.
Okay.
You know, we, reading our Facebook posts gets interesting sometimes, so.
I know.
Maybe, maybe not the best barometer for, for what's actually going on, but at least it, you know, if, if we're getting hundreds of comments about, you know? Even when we identified the individual, that the speculation was rampant, so.
Great, thank you. I wanted to circle back to what Sean had said about, just to, just to close that loop on what your opinion on communication would be. Is that something that, like, is, is the leadership team still having that conversation internally? And then you, you'll be able to circle back to us, or?
Sure. I mean, I think we're kind of, we're in agreement and we're just not in agreement on one thing, right? So they, just the idea when I was just talking about that Thursday specifically. I do think that our principals know the age appropriateness of the communications for their, for their, their students.
Right.
I, I don't want to, I didn't want to necessarily get into whether staying in for recess warrants that on any given day because there might be a reason that, you know, but, but, but I think to your point is, is what are they communicating? And when is it, when is it communicated? I think there's a difference between a district-wide communication, especially if it's an event that's only impacting one school, depending on that event. I think that's what we have to make sure what it is. You know what I mean? Like, there could be, I, I could just think, there's so many, there, there's just this, just the odd scenarios that can take place at a school at any, on any given day that might warrant a communication from the principal that might not warrant us sending something out to everybody. But I think that's what we need to really make sure all of the leadership team is on the same page about.
And I do, I think on that, just to kind of, you talk about the district-wide. I know you, and I, being a previous elementary teacher, K to two kids can go home and say a lot of things without a lot of context. So I can see why, as much as I love that age, you can see why.
I actually think they all can, but I think you're right. No offense, Matty. And the adults as well, too, right? So I mean, I feel like.
But I, I can understand why a K to two principal feels the need to send out a communication to try and give parents some context if their kids, kiddos are coming home saying different things or, oh, we didn't get to have recess today, the whole school, or whatever. So I can understand.
It's really easy for rumors to start, exaggeration to start, anxiety.
Yeah, yeah.
Because kids will come home from class and say things that may or may not be the case. But if something unusual happens at school, it's more likely to cause concern for the family.
Yeah.
Well, and I guess that's my point, right? Because if you have three elementary schools and, you know, you, you have kiddos who can't always easily articulate what, what occurred that day. If you have two schools that are communicating with their community and then you have a third school that's not, you can see how that, the, the community of that third school might feel about it, right? I'm not saying it's rational, but people might say, okay, well, our school is less safe or something like that because we're not getting the same communications. And I guess that's my whole point is that, you know, to, to think about the, the folks who aren't getting the message, it just strikes me that some of the fears could have been related. I, no doubt, there, this was kind of like the perfect storm of stuff and you guys were faced with a difficult task. And it's just, the timing of it is how it is. My whole point in this conversation is, is if, if there's any discussion about issuing a school-wide communication, I would err on the side of doing so.
Oh, I, I do agree with you. That's, I, and the only reason I said that is because I just wanted to be clear that on Thursday, there was no question. Like, that kind of was the point. Because I agree with you that if, you know, that if, if we're like, hmm, should we? Then I think you're right, we're better off doing it. And that was just a, to, to try to kind of explain internally, we didn't think that, we, we thought this, this was resolved. And it wasn't something that was necessarily needed to be communicated, but I agree with you.
I think one final thought for me is, and it may have been in one of the emails, I've read several, but maybe just putting out something of our verbiage, right? That a shelter in place is not necessarily an emergency, right? Because kids may go home and go, oh, we had a shelter in place today. And really, all it was, was that someone needed to be, you know, moved more safely, right? Or, you know, wildlife is out, so we're, we're staying indoors type things. As opposed to, I don't know if you use the term lockdown or whatever that terminology would be, educating the public on what terminology you will use in, in, in the schools with the students and also in communication. I think that would be probably helpful to put some of those things in context that the students are coming home and saying it out of context.
An important piece of that, though, is that, like, a shelter in place, a kid might not even notice.
Right, right.
Right?
I would, I would argue that that is going to be different based on what staff say, what students hear, you know, what parents are rece, you know, are received by that. It's just, you know, yeah. It's a fine line that administrators walk along with the police department when we're trying to ensure safety and then also get communication out in a timely manner that makes sense for everyone, so.
Right, I'm not necessarily saying communication. I'm just saying, like, I don't know if they come over the, the intercom and say, okay, shelter in place, or, right? It's probably just a very small, subtle thing that happens, but.
Typically, I think.
Sometimes they do, though. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. What you're kind of saying is, have we, have we reminded people what are, what, you know, what some of the protocols are? And I think that's a, I think that's a fair question. It kind of takes me back to Valerie's point about people who are new to the district, whether they're K to two families or whether they've moved in. They wouldn't know about the task force that we talked about for years, right? And it's one of those things that we kind of, we talk about alesterls and we talk about things that like, students have been doing this honestly forever now, it seems, right? And so it has just become sort of, they're just aware of it. And, and, you know, I can see Matty nodding, not to put her on the spot, but nodding over there a number of times because she's kind of now, having lived through all of the different schools and kind of gone through the process, understanding that it, they're just different, there, there are different ways in which the students respond at, you know, at the, at the age level. But I think your point is, is well taken, Tom.
Yeah, we experience, I've been doing it since kindergarten. And it's, I've done different variations. I've done the whole, you know, mess up the classroom, I've done just a shelter place. I've done even just like the lockdowns, I know you were talking about it, someone else's a medical emergency. I did that for real a couple of years ago. I believe there was, I think, police, WPD responded and there was some student who had a medical emergency or just needed some extra help and we locked down and everyone was kind of panicked at first. But, because I don't think we've ever done that for real, but it was super calm and like, but definitely everyone experienced it differently because I did see people who were like, oh, my God. But I think, like you said, everyone interprets it differently. And I know, I see it all the time in students, but it is a normal thing that we do. It's not necessarily a big deal anymore because the school system has made sure that we practice these measures constantly, more than once a year, and that we as the students are ready for it. And I, I can sure that kids who are in second grade or the K to two schools, you know, obviously they haven't been doing as long as we have in the high school, but they've been doing it since they started. It's a regular thing.
Thanks. Any final thoughts or we can thank the?
I was about to say, just to, to thank Chief Chambers. But the fact that you continued the investigation or, you know, over those few days, because, you know, as a parent, I did appreciate that you were able to, you know, figure things out and make contact and stuff, you know?
Lot of help from the community. Some not so helpful, but never want to discourage that, though.
Teamwork, man.
And thank you for making time tonight, we really appreciate that.
No problem.
Yeah, thank you for everything.
Thanks.
See you next week.
Oh, for special time.
Yes, Monday night.
Great, well, thank you, everybody, for that. We're going to move on to our next order of business, which is the non-general fund guidelines.
You want your slides, do you?
So the finance subcommittee has been working on this since, sort of in theory, theoretical terms, since last.
Spring.
Last spring, last town meeting. And then we articulated it as one of our school committee goals for this year. And so the finance committee, finance subcommittee has been sort of kicked into high gear a little bit. And what we have is a document that we're working on that will go into a level of detail. But I wanted to first set the stage with what are we actually talking about? Because I think a lot of people would benefit from understanding that when we talk about the budget, there's a lot of different words that we use, a lot of different terms that we use, and a lot of different sort of funding mechanisms that happen. So when we say general fund, that's referring to, and Jenny, jump in if I, if I picked any wrong words. But when we say general fund, we're talking about the allocation, like, that's the amount that you vote on at town meeting. That includes Chapter 70 state aid. It also includes, what I'm simplifying there as town tax revenue, but it could also be, um, local.
Local receipts.
The local receipts, thank you, Jenny. So it's not just like taxpayers, but it's all of like the, the Westford revenue. That's our slice of the Westford revenue.
Jenny, not to put you on the spot, but would you mind just coming up to the table in case you do have something else to add that we can pick you up by the microphone?
Thanks, Jenny.
But Valerie's taking, Valerie's presenting, she's presenting.
And then we have something we call, depending on the document, depending on the thing, we can, sometimes they're referred to as special funds, sometimes they're referred to as non-general funds. And they can mean, they can have sort of all these different buckets. So circuit breaker, which I think most of you are familiar with, is sort of our state special education reimbursement. We hit a certain amount, a percentage, the, the state reimburses for that. We hold that in a separate account line item so that we sort of don't touch it and use it for the next year ahead. We also have school choice, which we get a revenue from the amount of students that attend our district from other districts and their state aid dollars follow them. And we have some grants. Some of them are specific for special education, some of them are in much smaller amounts. And then we have revolving accounts, which you can think about like your water bill. They're like user fees that are charged for a service and we try to keep them all separate so that they can be offset in, used for that type of purpose. So I thought a pie chart would be really helpful as a place to start so that you can see that all the colors that we're talking about as non-general funds make up that sort of top, top slice.
And then just point to the, the note at the top that you're using FY '24. Just to remind everybody because the numbers are, so that you have the, you have the full picture.
Right, because FY '25 would be budgeted, FY '24 is done and dusted. And so that's. And so that's those are the numbers that was easiest to use. And because the business office has been great about finishing all end-of-year reporting already, this was all finalized numbers. Any questions on that slide to sort of set the stage? Okay, so you can go to the next page. What came out of a lot of the conversations last year was questions about all those non-general funds. I think sometimes word terms like comp reserve get mentioned or school choice get mentioned. And they can be really confusing if you're not well-versed in the school budget. So, what we're aiming to do is produce a document each fall, publishing it once a year and having it be a supplemental resource for pub- a public-facing document that can, that someone can go to to see what types of revolving accounts we have, typical usage for those revolving accounts, a couple of years of past history for those, for each account. This has never really existed in one place like this. We, finance subcommittee has been drawing on a couple of districts that have done a really good job on that is Peabody, Franklin, and Westboro. So we've kind of pick and choose and been inspired by a few different. And a lot of the conversations we've had in finance subcommittee are about how do we make this sustainable, right? We don't want, I personally will do not want to create a document that then the business office or Jenny has to work to create and manipulate her data to fit into some separate document. So we, I felt strongly that it should be a spreadsheet format so that she can copy and paste what they're already creating for a budget process into this document instead of some other format.
To her already tireless work.
Thank you, yes. So, where, this is ideally like a cover page that would that would help set the, set some some sort of common level definitions for what someone's about to read. We've gone back and forth in finance subcommittee about what kind of information could go here. For example, one thing that if you're doing your personal finances, you might use like a negative to show an outgoing expense. But in school accounting, it's just the regular value. And then a credit has parentheses. Did I get that right, Jenny? Okay, so there's no negatives. So sometimes that can be a little confusing for someone to read. So, that kind of information, we're trying to sort of front-load onto a cover page.
Not being an accountant, my understanding was that that's just accounting best practices. That's just accounting best practices.
That's my limited experience with accounting process.
Credit and debit are backwards from what we do for personal finance.
Yeah, otherwise, when we, you know, export the data, we have to change back to, from the credit balance back to into negative balance. So that's whole set of data we have to reverse. So that's why we try to keep the original format.
So, and that's another piece that we that we debated on, which was, will somebody be confused by the lack of negative signs? But I guess I would err on the side of what can we make is sustainable for this? And what's sustainable is what they're already doing. So if setting some definitions in the document helps someone read that but saves the business office a step, I'm in favor of that. So, we, finance subcommittee met last week and we've been chugging along with, there's there's many, many, many of these accounts. And we've sort of got a draft live document, but it's not ready for public consumption. So what I did was capture some screenshots to give you two examples. One of a more complicated one, which we thought was this food service. And the next one you'll see, which is sort of our facility rentals and school building revolving account, which is a little bit more straightforward. So, for food service, for each one of these accounts, you would have sort of the title, the purpose, a little bit of background, the amounts for the user fees, which types of, like, are there any other places where we get revenue that go into this account? So for food service, it's not just what the students are are paying for at the register. It's also where federal and state reimbursements and catering receipts would come into. And then what are some typical expenses that have been previously discussed and expected to be used for? So, as you remember from the FY twenty five discussions, one change was the portion of head custodian wages that was used as an offset from this account. So that was captured here, obviously supplies, and then capital purchases if applicable. So one recent example was the Miller fridge and the freezer. We've also got a line for any related laws or policies. And then I think the meat of it is really going to be these bottom four lines here, which are, we're we're sort of attesting to what is expected routine usage. So for food service, this is basically self-funded, routine revenue covers expenses, offsets are used in this way. One of the feedback we heard from the finance committee and the community was, what are the expected balance amounts for all of these accounts? So this is where we're going to try to dive in and commit to something here. Food service is one of, although it's a sort of a complicated line item, the expected balance amount is one of the most straightforward because it is a directive from the state to say that there should be a balance of three months of operating expenses. I also thought it was helpful that we try to capture any recent changes. Because, for example, when we create this for FY twenty six in the in the next few months, we don't want to lose track of where we've come or any changes that have happened in recent budget cycles. So, I thought this was a good place to sort of capture any recent history. And you can read for yourself there, but that should sound familiar from the conversations we had about FY twenty five. Ideally, when this document would get published and shared, we would have a proposed offset that the business office and Jenny and Dr. Chu and administration would be using to craft that next budget. So that proposed offset right now is just TBD because we're just not ready to publicize that yet. But that would ultimately be also a very important data point for each account. I've talked a lot, any questions on this slide?
I have a question in general. This looks great. I'm curious, are we also work, is this kind of going to essentially create the policy? Because my understanding, so we're working on this in order to figure out what the policy looks like.
Yeah, so one thing we were talking about, so our focus right now is this because this is where I think the expected balance amount is and then the proposed offset, which will feed into the FY twenty six budget. But we talked about a policy that wouldn't have numbers in it, like, that wouldn't need to be updated as regularly, right? This gets updated once a year, a policy hopefully not that often.
I think the policy would articulate that this needs to happen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That this needs to happen every year.
And we could summarize sort of the top piece of this.
Yeah.
For each line item, for each account in that policy. So if there's a, so there's a high-level policy document to look at that would point you to, this document needs to be created every year.
And I think that what was coming out of the finance committee hearings last year, policy-related, was that the the expected balance, right? And it won't necessarily be policy, but once we establish those those limits, if we see an account that's in excess, then we will, we, I say we.
Dr. Chu and the business office will come up with a plan to bring us back to that.
I I think one of the biggest takeaways at a high level is that with a document like this and a routine review like that, the the goal is that we'll never be sort of surprised by a growing balance that needs to be addressed, right? Like, this would be this very routine thing that happens every fall and gets us to a better place.
And based on, just as you even said that, Tom, it made me think of the one other piece to this where I would say, my suggestion would, I don't think that the amounts should ever exist in the policy because our policy about policies requires so many meetings to review it, to go through it, that I think what it should do is the policy should should say that the amounts need to be established. And maybe whether it's the full committee or whether it's the 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 subcommittee of the the FinCom subcommittee, that they're approving it, but that they're not then bound by the three-week or the three-meeting cycle of policies, that if you were to adjust the amounts for any given year. But I think the policy should say specifically, who, yeah, who's establishing that? And which group, is it something that needs to come to the full committee? Or is it something that the that the the subcommittee could could do?
My gut instinct would be, it would be a full committee vote, but I totally guess.
It's a it's a timeliness of it. It could be something that needs to happen faster than.
So, like I said, that document is in our conversations, but is sort of second fiddle to diving down to the meat of this with the budget looming.
And can I ask one other question?
Yep.
The, specifically on the food service, because I know we spoke about this last year. You know, Dessie recommends we maintain a three-month balance. Do they say under what circumstances we could ever spend that? Because if it just sits there for three months and we never do, like, a three-month.
No, it's just, it's just to keep salaries going.
Regulation like, what 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 area we should spend that, we can decide by the food for service department. Like, if that's capital expenditure or any kind of repairs or maintenance, we can spend on everything on the food service account.
And then I didn't speak to this yet, but the sort of that bottom half is cut off. You'll, we obviously have more than four, three and a half schools. But we went back and forth a little bit on like, how much information to share here from the history. We felt like this is four complete years with like two, two years of just end-of-year balance, sorry, three years of end-of-year balance, and then one year of showing expenses and revenue and another end-of-year balance.
So the idea being that every year that that kind of shifts.
Yeah, just column to column, yeah. And you get that recent history, it's another lens of information.
And just to remind everybody, this level of information has always been available when the business office produces a quarterly update or produces their budget documentation. We're always getting that add-on, that's the special revenue, special funds.
But like you said, this is for anybody to pick up and review and.
Yep.
And Catherine, I think what you were asking about, like, when when we could spend that money, like, I would venture to say that the the statutes are there for a rainy day. You know, if if something catastrophic happened and we stopped receiving revenue, we could still pay our our staff
Right.
in a bridge period, basically, so it's not.
And then just another example to round out the discussion tonight is the next slide of. There we go.
Is that it?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yep, yep.
School building usage, so these are our facility rental fees. Again, you you would just be able to open this up and see school building usage with a pre- brief purpose narrative. The fees for this are a little bit more complicated, that's why there's a link instead. But if if you imagine like athletic revolving account here, it would list out the fees. Or if it was bus transportation, it would list out the fee. Because again, we'll be updating this every fall. And then types of sou- types of expenses, any related laws or policies, expected routine usage, expected balance amount, recent changes, and a proposed offset. And then here's a more cleaner version of sort of that, like, four, four past years of account activity plus the, would be the current budgeted amount. So, like, for, in in two or three months, this would look like that with FY twenty one, FY twenty two, FY twenty three, FY twenty four in the books. And then FY twenty five, which we're currently in, would be in, would be a placeholder there. But then the FY twenty six reference is really above in that proposed offset.
So give, it would give you like a current glimpse, right, in that checkpoint that we determined we want to have is that next annual update, it's going to give you that checkpoint here and now of where we are in that balance. That budgeted balance box at the end.
We did have a pretty, I would say, initial conversation of what a good balance for this account would be, just to give you the rest of you that aren't in finance subcommittee, a glimpse into our discussions, which is, we went back and forth on like, okay, so if this balance grows, do you sort of, do you eyeball some big project that needs updating from the facilities? Or do you kind of keep ratcheting up based on, you know, how your performance, right? Because this account does have the potential to grow as we are, as the facilities are being used by outside groups paying the rental fees and we're, you know, covering what we're proposing. But then the the balance could still grow. So we had a pretty good discussion about which one of those. We thought that, initially anyway, that watching for growth at the start of each budget cycle and to to consider increasing the offset would be the, our recommendation.
We can't pay for utilities?
It, that's not a, that's not ineligible, it just means that we haven't been doing that.
Oh, I gotcha.
So I probably could.
And we're we're still. This is more discussion about the layout.
Yeah, 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 no.
It's more of like, here's what it might look like, but it's it's still.
You want to basically see if the policy idiots can understand it, is that what you're saying?
This is for the greater, greater public, too.
Yes.
You know, even for a a public person to get really into the weeds, like, they, if they want to go into master in our law, chapter forty second three, chucking, you know, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
They can do so on their own volition, but, you know, this is the guiding principles that we're governed by our regs.
No, I think it looks awesome.
So some of the conversations we've been having is like, does, if it's a non-general fund guideline, does it include, if you go back to the top slide, does it include, no, one more. Like, do we call it a non-general fu- do we call it revolving accounts? And then we limit it to those things that have fees. But a lot of the conversation we had last year from finance committee and the community focused on school choice. So if we call it a revolving accounts document, then it wouldn't include school choice. Do we call it a non-general funds? But we also don't want to necessarily put ourselves on the hook for documenting every grant because that can change year to year and those amounts, you know, so the, sort of all the terminology is still, we're still flushing that out, but those are some of the conversations we're having. Any questions or commentary that I've missed?
I think we had some discussion about the fact that grants are very unique because they are, they're governed by themselves.
Right.
You can only spend from a grant for what the purpose of the grant is. So, I I do think that would be.
Separate.
Maybe just a very brief slide of grants are grants.
Right.
Yeah. And maybe what the balance of those grants are, but.
And like, even though to me, circuit breaker is, you know, totally off off the table because we have like a very clear protocol for how to use it. It's also, if this document is sort of community education, it's not a bad thing to have it in there necessarily either. So, at the moment, I guess I'm leaning towards non-general funds and then we can put sort of in that asterisk that grants are not included.
Loving this, no.
Okay. Oh, my god. I wanted to thank Jenny, too, for all of her help populating this and my like last-minute plea to put together a pie chart. So I appreciate Jenny, as always.
We appreciate your effort on this whole project, too.
Thanks. Okay, let me know if you think of something later, but we'll just keep chugging and give you an update.
The idea is every fall, the finance subcommittee would take this and update it for what would have been the end-of-year balances for the previous school year.
So I think, like, yes, I think in the fall, the discussions would start with finance subcommittee. I think we'll use this year as sort of a guinea pig to say, when does it make sense to say this is published? I think this year will be the guinea pig to say, like, when are we ready to hit publish? Whether that's, you know, like, Dr. Chu usually brings a budget presentation sometime in December. But there's always things that are still chugging along with the business office. So I was kind of thinking, like, two weeks before a FinCom hearing, this would be sort of published. Right, like, that's when everything sort of is getting really finalized.
I think it is in the fall, leading up to the budget.
We're having these conversations, we're checking in and we're, yeah.
I think this this year may be a little bit different. We may want to get the one with like the FY twenty five numbers because they'll have to be populated anyway, right? To be able to move move along. But get it out there so people can start to digest what the format is.
Sure.
Right, and then when it's the FY twenty six. Right, and then when it's the FY twenty-six numbers, it, it may, I, I don't know, it just might help to, to better understand.
Yeah.
What, what we're looking at, so.
Might be worth, once you're publishing it, that we actually put it as an agenda item, I assume that's what you anticipate, yeah.
Yes. Uh, yeah, I wanted to make sure we share a, a glimpse, it's a glimpse.
Some progress.
Yep. Great, thank you. We are moving on to School Committee Building Tour Reflections, so, um, last Wednesday, myself, Catherine, Lori.
Sean.
And Sean, thank you, I'm sorry. We're welcomed in, we started at Abbott.
You were all welcomed.
Sorry, sorry.
You get, you were the only ones, your schedule was.
Yes, sorry. We started in Abbott, um, and got to, uh, observe, one of, I, I'm sorry, I like to share a little bit of history because what we've learned over the years with our tours is that breezing through ten classrooms does not give us the same information as spending thirty minutes in three classrooms does. So, that's the feedback that the committee has been giving the administration for the last few years, and that fed into this schedule. So, we started at Abbott and, um, we broke up into two groups to try and be a little bit more, um.
Subtle.
Subtle, uh, and got to witness the ELA blocks in, um, two, well, four different classrooms, um, at Abbott, and then went to NAMNASIT and witnessed, um, the UFLY lesson in a kindergarten room, and then the EL education in a first-grade room. And then had a, a lovely notice and wonder with our curriculum coordin- elementary curriculum coordinators, Erin Hogan and Julie Kelly. And, um, I'll open it up, and so I can stop talking. Any, anybody want to share their notice and wonders, or, um, just any reflections we have from it? Besides, obviously, our immense thanks to our curriculum coordinators, administration who set it up, and the teachers who volunteer for for first, you know, visitors in their room, which I know is not always comfort zone for people, so we really appreciate that.
I also have to say, the kids were awesome, like, they weren't, you know, thrown off.
They didn't bat an eye that you were there.
They really don't, they're clearly so used to, you know, um, staff coming in and out and just doing their thing, or whatever, so that, that was really awesome to see. I mean, I, I just have to say, it was, it was a great morning, it was a, you know, one of my favorite, I think, school tours, per se, that we've done so far. Um, because like that, we were really kind of seeing something in action, um, and Erin, you know, really wrapped it up nicely, kind of, at the end of the day. So, it really gave me a good understanding, just in terms of scheduling and how we can support teachers, because, um, you know, it's quite a, a hands-on, um, time-consuming, in a good way, you know, um, ru- you know, kind of curriculum and lessons and stuff. So, it was great to kind of put it through the lens of, how can we support the teachers? How can we look at scheduling and timetables and, um, kind of keeping that in mind longer term? And then I loved how Erin kind of shared her data, kind of at the end, um, to kind of really back up that these changes we're making in, um, that explicit instruction, kind of Science of Reading, um, back curriculum, and, and how it's, um, they're beginning, they're already seeing kind of, uh, what's the word, improvements further through, through that, so, um.
So, for Bill and Tom, um, at the end, we had a conversation about the DIBELS screening, um, test data that the curriculum coordinator had correlated to show which grade levels have received previous years of instruction, right? Because we're on year two of EL.
Yeah, three to five, year two, UFLY's been, um, for two years.
Um, so, like, tracking which grade level has seen previous expe- um, instruction.
And we're going to bring that to the full committee too.
Okay.
Okay.
It's gonna, we're gonna tie it into the MCAS presentation.
When we do the MCAS presentation, we're going to share that additional data.
But the takeaway was that we're, we believe the data is showing payoff from this type of instruction.
And it's very, it's a very dynamic, um, type of curriculum, there's a lot of collaboration, um, project work, really strong emphasis on skill building, which was really lovely to see, um, with the kids. Um, and they all really seemed to, it was, you know, interesting to see all different types of kids, and clearly different types of learners all engaging in this, these various texts and, um, lessons and, um, all kind of accessing us, um, in their, in their own way. So, it was, it, it, I have to say, it was really, really lovely to see that I, we definitely, you know, hats off to Erin. She did her homework well at the time, and, you know, they've really brought in a, a lovely curriculum, um, and I don't know if any of you got to, I was being very nosy, as I often do in those classrooms, so I managed to find some of the supporting textbooks that go along with it, and they're just a beautiful set of books. I mean, I would never have, you know, thought for a second that these are the kind of books that are coming in. So, it was, I, I think it was a, a good, a good decision.
Yep. So, my understanding of the EL education is that there's four modules, and then each module has like an anchor text. And so, we got to see sometimes, this, um, anchor text was being read aloud in small groups, and, and another room, that was the grade three, I think, and that we, that I was in anyway. And then, we also saw, um, another room where maybe the anchor text is a poetry, um, novel, book? I'm using the wrong term there. And, but, and, so they were, they were sort of applying their skillset to a different home as a class. There's a lot of like turn and talk to your partners, which I just feel like maybe is.
At all levels.
Yeah, I guess.
And it's just maybe not like how we experience school.
Thirty years ago was not the same vehicle.
And it's, um, you like, I mean, just watching the third-grade class, fourth, fourth-grade class.
The first one you're talking about.
Sorry, I was in, I was in fourth grade, I was in poetry for fourth grade. Watching them like apply their, the, the structure, analyze the structure, analyze.
They had twenty minutes to analyze the poem, no, they had ten minutes to analyze the poem.
But like.
And I was like, wow, I would have thought they needed much more time than that, but.
Knowing, knowing the terminology, I'm, I'm blinking on.
The structure, they wanted to break.
Stanzas, yeah, like, just all the exposure that they're having to.
The mind picture leading to imagery and.
Right, imagery, thank you. Um, it was just really, really cool to see in practice, um.
I thought the level of engagement with the kids was amazing.
Yeah.
I did not see one kid who was off task. They were all engaged.
And enthusiastically engaged.
Enthusiastic and collaborating with other kids.
So much collaboration.
Yeah.
There was so much.
And the teachers were amazing, I was very impressed. And I hope every, they, did they receive a thank you from us?
They did.
Yes.
Well, the, um, both Erin and Julie wrote very nice notes, all of them, yeah.
Yeah, oh, good, yeah.
What was so funny even on one of them, I think, Chris, you were in that one, you would have walked in and could have thought you were in an art class.
Mm-hmm.
There was, you know, and, and I loved that about it, and that's kind of.
Magnificent thing.
The magnificent thing, and, you know, it just totally speaks to kind of that UDL, um, that we're kind of to ro- rolling out throughout the district. So, it was, it was awesome to see.
I love the multicultural books that they were working on in grade three. The one from Afghanistan was a very powerful book, and the kids were handling it, it really well, very thoughtfully.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Talking, having discussions with each other, answering questions.
And it, it's so, it's so.
That's another piece of the curriculum that's phenomenal.
It's so multi-dimensional, because like, the, the map is pulled down on, on the board to show like, to have like, I thought Af- Afghanistan like highlighted.
Right.
And so, the kids are reading, and I was, I was like, hey, how did you know how to say that word, Taliban? And they're like, oh, we, well, like, the teacher read it out loud yesterday, so, but then they're like doing peer reading today. So, they get like all this different exposure, using that.
Well, it integrates with other subject areas, like history and geography, which is so, makes it so much more meaningful for the kids.
Right.
And also, even with the poetry, there was, they were integrating with music.
Yep.
Yeah.
The orchestra and.
Right.
Yeah, and sound, in general, which poetry is, and so is music, so I thought it was great.
Does it go up to high school? Can we go to high school?
Real quick, one, one of the things that I really appreciated of the experience was, the first class that we got to see, I know you guys didn't get to see it, but, but, there was, uh, one text that all the students were, um, reading from, I'm forgetting what the name of the text was. Catherine, do you remember the fourth grade text?
Es- es- Esperanza Rising?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there we go. I kept calling it Esmeralda.
Anyways, it was, uh, two observations that I made, first of all, they, they were using the same text for the whole class, and it sounds like they were using it for the whole grade?
Yeah, they're using it in all the schools, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Which I appreciated because it, you had a bunch of students who were coming in at all sorts of different, uh, grade levels, or, I'm sorry, reading levels. Um, and it sounds like the teachers did their best and really bent over to, to, backwards to make sure that, um, all the students could participate in this one particular text, so there was this sense of like inclusion, right? Um, even though there were students at varying levels, who were all participating in the same activity, which, um, I mean, we talk about that all the time, right, like, inclusion, 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 and it's like, it's vastly different than the experience I had when I was in school, so.
That in itself is a big aspect of, of the curriculum, and what they're doing with Science of Reading is making sure that all students have access to the same complex task. Uh, the ca- the complex.
Text.
Text.
Text, yeah.
And from there, then scaffold supports, right? So, then to help make sure that, make sure that people are understanding, and then there might be different activities and different supplemental materials that are there helping. But you're right, this anchor text is something that everybody's experiencing, as opposed to, you know, the leveled readers of the, of the, that people would be accessing necessarily in the past, or where not everybody's doing the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, and so I think that that is a, it's a, it's a great shift.
But it's so much of learn, it's, sorry.
No, no, go for it.
So much of learning, I feel like, like sport is, uh, in your head, right? Like, if, if, if you continually tell a student that they can't do something, then they, they won't be able to. Or you signal to them that, okay, well, you can read a different text because you're not as far along. So, I think just that, that subtle nod to all students that, hey, you're all doing the same thing, you're all in the same boat, uh, and maybe the service delivery is slightly different, is, uh, it was profound and enlightening to see in practice.
No, just coming in, back on that lesson, thinking back on that, um, Esperanza Rising book, and you were talking about the scaffolding. Um, what was really lovely to see in that, that lesson is, um, that book and study, it kind of also looks at, um, understanding uh, international human rights, and they all had the kind of the child version, um, of the international human rights. And they were reading this text, but also referring back to what were the different human rights that they felt were violated, um, through the story. And I'm looking at these fifth graders, and they've got this book tabbed, like, all these little post-it notes of Article nineteen, Article fourteen, and they're, you know, so they clearly, they were sca- like you were saying, they're, they're scaffolding it through, um, and having these amazing conversations of topics we didn't, um, even touch on, I think, at that age, um, but I just loved that, that was an awesome lesson in particular, was, yeah.
And then, at the K to two level, we were all in the room for kindergarten.
I was going to say, someone needs to mention that.
A co, yeah, first of all, it was really cool because we got to see a co-taught lesson, so there was a gen ed kindergarten teacher with a teaching assistant, I'm sorry, ESP, and a special education teacher in the sort of back half of the room, also teaching a small group of, a, um, version of the lesson. And we got, we were in the room when those, that group of students wrote their first word.
Yeah, they read it, they read their first words, and then they were writing their first words.
Very successfully wrote their first words.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I mean, one of, the biggest takeaway I had from that room was, we would have never been able to do the, some of those lessons in that way, with half-day kindergarten.
Right.
It, it is forty-five minutes?
Yes.
It, it's this chunk of a lesson, and I was struck by how highly engaged the students are, and I had to remind myself that the rest of the day is, and, and it's built in too, into the lesson, but so much of the rest of their day is fun and play. And you.
And the lesson was fun.
It is.
It is, it's engaging.
But it's very structured.
Yes.
It is very structured.
And, I mean, their, their stamina is there, and, and it's just so amazing to see, but I just thought, my gosh, can you imagine these kids for two and a half hours, and you're doing this type of a lesson, and then sending them home? Like, it's, isn't it so great that we can give them a full day to be able to work this in, and also touch on all the other very important pieces of kindergarten?
And then practice those skills too, they can play on their own, yeah.
And I thought what was great about that too, is that they, there was a lot of different types of things that they were doing. There was kinesthetic, they were moving like the letters.
For the lively letters, yeah.
Right, you know, the lively letters, they were writing the letters.
Yeah.
They were making the, the sounds from the letters.
Yeah.
Uh, there was a, and there was, it was very, the momentum was really high, because all these different things were happening.
Yes.
And they were totally engaged and having fun with it.
Yeah, yeah. And I have erase, erase, erase stuck in my head. Um, and then we got to see two grade one classes, which, um, did a, I, was, both were touching on the most magnificent thing, I think.
Yeah.
So, they must have read this book, and then had decided on how to, um, build, or were in the process of building a, a.
A magnificent, a tool, a tool, a magnificent, a magnificent thing at school.
Yeah, a tool for the classroom. So, when you talk about interdisciplinary, or like, looked like an art class.
It was tools and, what was the unit, was, tools was in the name of the module.
Yeah.
I remember on their workbook, it was tools and, but, by the way, it's the magnificent thing.
Yeah. Just really, really great tour, well, well done, to help sort of put into practice, you know, the, the curriculum purchase obviously came to us and was approved, and just to be able to see it in practice was really great.
I do think one thing to note that kind of, you know, popped into, but, you know, kind of stuck with me as we were going through Abbott in particular, while we, in the middle of having conversations about feasibility studies and buildings, is, there was one classroom in particular we visited where, um, again, they were doing the EL, and, you know, we know Abbott has small classrooms. Now, there was only twenty, twenty-two kids in this class, but they were making it work, but you can see how, you know, the, the use of space is very different, and, um, you know, I kind of sat there going, gosh, I wish it could double the size of your classroom because of the, the dynamic, you know, kind of lessons that really are now happening in the classroom. So, it, it was actually really ni- nice to see from that other point of view, that it's something to be mindful, and that this, there is a genuine need in a lot of these classrooms, in particular in Abbott.
It's not desks and rows.
There's not desks and rows, but, you know, they're definitely confined for the type of learning that, you know, is becoming more and more, um, the norm.
Yeah.
So.
And, and it's becoming more and more the norm for how we work too.
Yeah.
So, it's not just for anyone that says, well, you know, why, why have we changed from the norm? Well, you know, because we don't work that way anymore, society doesn't work that way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Exactly.
Thank you for that great discussion. We're going to move on to Policy Update, a second reading of P three five oh five, approved warrants, and P seven two one one, school naming policy.
Do we have to read a second reading?
No.
No, it's just the first, I always get confused. Um, okay, just an update, um, the, uh, Policies Subcommittee met last week, um, and we reviewed, uh, again, our, the policies that are up for comment at the moment. Um, updated, uh, draft policies went into the packet for tonight, um, for anybody to have a look. So, looking at P three five oh five, let's start with that one, because it's the simpler one. Um, based on our conversation at our last, uh, School Committee meeting, we went back and made the change of, um, saying that we were designating the Chair, um, for the only signature required for our warrants. Um, and then we did also add the electronic signature, um, as being permissible, um, as an option. Um, and that's really the, the change. Jenny, um, has also said, you know, the rest of the language is appropriate for what happens in town practices and stuff. To date, we have received no public comment on that, but it is open until Thursday. Um, so, I don't anticipate any other changes coming on that policy, um, before we have our final vote on October twenty-eighth for that, unless anybody, any of you have any suggestions.
No, I think we had a great discussion last time, and thank you to the Policy Subcommittee for incorporating those edits. Made our job easier.
One quick question, and it's not necessarily, uh, for the electronic signatures, uh, do we need to specify anything about what constitutes an electronic signature? Like, just because, I mean, I could.
Oh, as in like, is it a, an image of your, a photo of your signature or electronic?
Or is it actually like through a sign, a signature system? Just, I, I'm just wondering out loud, just.
Maybe this is, I don't know if we want to check the language with, is there a finance lawyer?
Uh, well, the auditor approved it.
The auditor, so that's, that's.
Okay.
I would think it would have to be a, an.
Like a DocuSign type thing, not just. Not just an image they drop on it.
Right. Not really an e-signature, yeah, so I would think you're right, it would have to be. Yeah, because it has to be some active.
I wouldn't specify a specific system in a policy, but, you know, it has to meet certain criteria.
Is there like a generic term? Because I know those electronic signatures like have like a timestamp and a date stamp. So can you, I don't know, can you?
I don't know what's off my head.
What do you call this in the law world, Sean?
A legal sing, a, a signature can be anything. A signature can be a scribble, a mark. I mean, if, if it's intended to be, to do that, then I don't see what the difference between someone printing, signing it and scanning it and sending that way versus an electronic document. I mean, those are the same.
Well, but that, that would be a physical signature as opposed to.
Yeah, but I regularly, at least in my profession, people sign with backslash S for, sorry, forward slash S for, and then you type out your name. And that's considered a digital signature, but, I mean.
I'd say, okay, good to know.
So, I mean.
It's not a digital signature.
Yeah, so I just, I don't know.
Okay.
I wouldn't marry ourselves to one program or something.
No, no, definitely not.
Stuff changes, yeah. So I think it, it, it matters what the person intended it to be.
Yeah, I, I didn't know if we need to like follow certain protocols for legal purposes.
Yeah.
I don't think so, and I think actually to the, to the contrary, I recall there's a, there's a case law a few years ago about, you know, is an email a signature, right? Is your email your signature if someone was bound by a contract and the court found yes? But, yeah.
And I think we discovered as we were briefly, because we did look at this in the policy subcommittee meeting, that bill, like that bills and stuff on the state level can also have it. And we, we saw some of the language that they used, so.
I think we're fine.
That's fine.
Yeah.
It was just a question for.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any update on the naming policy?
So seven two one one, still up for public comment and again until Thursday. The main thing with this, we, we took back from the last meeting was adding in Maury's suggestion of having the unanimous school committee vote as opposed to the town meeting, having to go to town meeting. As we were discussing this, Sean then kind of said, well, do we give the option that if, on the event that you don't have a unanimous school committee vote, that the committee has the option of voting on whether to send it to town meeting or not? So we put that in there as a kind of a discussion point for tonight. A bit of information on that is, I had actually reached out to the town moderator, Angela Harkness, who I actually managed to meet with yesterday and to kind of just get her thoughts on it. And also she was, you know, a former school committee member, so I appreciated her, her viewpoint. You know, and Angela had said she was welcome for me to share this information. In her mind and in her viewpoint and understanding how town meetings run, she said, you know, school namings really, she felt, should stay at the school committee level. She said, you know, the really big stuff is what really should end up on a town meeting agenda, budgets, bylaws, amendments, et cetera. Whereas something like naming a building really should stay within the elected officials of a school committee. And so I kind of just thought I would share that with you to see if you, if it changed your mind in any way or, you know, in terms of changing kind of that perspective that we had put into the policy. And that was kind of it. We rearranged a bit, we cut a bit more out to try and clean it up a little bit more. But that was kind of the big thing.
And the current drafts are in the packet?
The current drafts are in the package.
Any, have we gotten any public comments?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Great.
Okay, thank you. Student enrollment update.
So you, you'll see the, this month is our official October one numbers that you're looking at, which is what we report to the state and then becomes the, we also do, the second reporting is in March. Kathy, correct the, the follow-up support that we report to the state. But our October ones are always our official numbers, so you're now looking at the numbers. There was a slight change, but nothing significant, that's typical.
Any questions on the enrollment? Okay, we can move on to personnel update.
What you have in the packet is pretty self-explanatory.
Yes.
Our comings and goings, a lot of new hires, a lot of substitutes, and we are continuing to look for substitutes. So if anybody is interested, we will welcome an application.
Okay. Thank you. That is all of our business on the agenda, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And second, thank you. Alls in favor?